Item five, public comments. I don't think we had anybody. Nobody signed up for public comments. So that would bring us into item six. An update reported by the Director of Electric Utilities regarding customer service and business center practices, procedures and policies, billing procedures, and LPNL staffing and performance. Mr. Comey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Normally, the highlights to the Director's report that are in here, we normally have a section of the report that talks about our outage reports. And so I thought instead of spending a lot of time on the written report, I'm happy to answer any questions for what members or council members might have. I thought I'd use this time to talk about the outages that we had Monday in Houston. And Mr. Comey is here, and I've asked him to put together a little report of the outages. It was pretty significant events for the system.
So Monday evening, November sixteenth, we had a strong thunderstorm roll through. The National Weather Service confirmed seventy-one mile an hour winds that they had report. At seven oh five PM that night, our Murphy twenty-three one circuit locked out, and that caused an outage affecting about three hundred and twenty customers. At ten fifteen that same evening, we restored that circuit, and the cause of the outage was the primary phase was down around the six thousand, six thousand and one thirty-fourth street. At seven thirty that same evening, we had two poles break. At twenty-three fourteen third place, the overhead department changed out the poles, and the power was restored to the customers about two thirty Tuesday morning. Several more poles were broken at twenty-one hundred block of Baylor, two thousand block of East Bradley, and twenty-one hundred block of Clovis Road. We had approximately two hundred outages due to lateral fuses blown, service wires down by trees, and single customer outages. As of eight o'clock Tuesday morning, we had sixty-eight customers that were still out. So overall, through the event, there were about five hundred and twenty customers that were back to us. Yesterday, at ten forty-five AM, Excel lost the Cardile transmission line. It relayed out to Buskett Fringe. This caused outages to LPNL's Cardile circuits, twenty-three one and twenty-three two, as well as our Baton substation transformer number one, which had two circuits circled off the end, Baton circuit fifteen-two and fifteen-three. Excel did some switching, restored the feed to Baton, and had eleven left. So there was about thirty-six minutes there, or twenty-six minutes there that it took to get Baton restored. Excel didn't inform us it would take several hours to make their repairs, so we did switch in and restore power to Cardile, and we had that done at eleven sixteen AM yesterday. At three thirty yesterday afternoon, Excel reported that repairs on their line were complete. We switched Cardile back to normal at that time, and Excel switched the Baton transmission back to normal at three thirty. The transmission outage affected four thousand seventy-four of our customers. And also, yesterday throughout the day, we received forty phone calls for electric trouble that were related to the storm the evening before. Right now, I'm happy to report we don't have any outages.
Are you sure?
As far as I know.
You know, when you start getting wind gusts in the seventy mile an hour range, that's probably a storm.
It's just another day here, Dave. So, you know, it's, we never like to have outages, but it's hard to design a system that can prevent outages and that sort of one.
Mr. Allen. You know, one thing that strikes me when you gave that report, when we had that bad wind outage, it was twelve, back in two thousand twelve, thirteen. It was all in that general area of town, and this one seems to be as well. Is there something deeper about our infrastructure down in that area, or is that all old Excel infrastructure? Is there some reason you think it's snapping there first?
No, I believe there's just more exposure. There's more open, more exposure as you get down into town where it's, where you have more trees and more houses and more reflection, reflection. These areas that are out helping it get full exposure, probably see most of the damage. In town, yeah, most of the damage is caused by tree, miniature trees. When you get out, out away from the trees, then the poles have to take a turn there. Hard on them.
Well, I want to thank our line and our staff for the prompt work on that. I was checking our outage report all through the evening as all those calls were coming in. I was hoping those would be through the evening, and all those prepared and restored. Thank you to your staff, and hard on them.
Yeah, it's really tough getting those, getting those vacuum trucks up in the air in those really high winds, those, we're doing pretty well, apparently, because it's where we're in for you. So the guys really, really do a tremendous job in that kind of weather.
And you have two active lines, and a lot of those.
Yeah. So the other, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the telephone system that we've got now, the call, the way that we receive calls, the way that we respond to calls. And so I've asked Andy to talk with us about that.
And as David said, obviously, when there's an outage, a lot of folks want to call in to let us know that there's a problem, and a lot of times, it's comfort for them to hear back from us that, you know, we're on our way, we're taking a look at things. There has been limitations on our phone system. There are. There are always going to be limitations when you have four or five thousand individuals without power. We don't have four or five thousand folks answer calls or that many lines certainly. So there's, there's always going to be difficulty getting through in those types of incidents. For about, about a year and a half ago, we started trying to determine how can we increase the amount of calls that can come in to the call center, can come into the outage management system. You know, at that time, there were a total of forty inbound lines. So once the forty lines would be full, then the next fifty lines on top of that would be in queue, and it would just ring and ring and ring. And then if you had more than a hundred, it would just be a fast busy signal. And it's very frustrating to customers to call and just have it ring, 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 or get a busy signal. So one of the things that we instituted, and we finally got it in place in June of this year, was an additional ninety-nine lines, where when you call in, again, those first forty, will get into the outage management system, can type in their information, and obviously, as those lines are freed up, more people can get in. The additional ninety-nine that we added is really just an outbound message. It alerts the customer that we know that there's an outage situation, that our phone lines are overloaded, and it also instructs the customer to text or email to the lights out at LPNL.com to let us know. And so that has been very helpful, but still, that gives you a hundred and forty folks that either get a message or can call in and have some activity. They're still in a situation like this as a large number of individuals that are going to get a fast busy signal just because the circuits are overloaded. So we've looked at some other alternatives. We haven't implemented any other alternatives at this point. Additional lines are very expensive. And in addition to that, our outage management software only has so many ports, you know, so even if we added a whole bunch more lines, they, we still may not be able to get into the outage management system. And that's why I think Matt's done a really good job of, you know, Facebook, being in front of the media to let everyone know about the lights out at LPNL.com, text or email. And unfortunately, there are some customers who may not have a cell phone, may not have the ability to text with their phone, so when the power's out, they can't get on their computer and let us know. So we've had some frustrated customers due to that kind of stuff. But at this point, you know, we're just trying to keep getting out in the community that email or text is an easy way to get the information to us. Again, even with those emails flooding in or texts flooding in, to get seven thousand of those, we're still not going to be able to get to all of them all at once. It's just, there are limitations on the number of people that can do that. But I just wanted to point out that we did add the extra ninety-nine lines this, this year, which has been very helpful. We're, we're doing what we can, but it is difficult to really appease the entire community when we have these significant outages that kind of cause difficulty. Being able to talk to a lot of person, we'd all love to be able to talk to a lot of person. We'd be able to love to talk a lot to everybody, but that's just not really practical in any situation. So I just wanted to give you an update, and if y'all have any suggestions or ideas of other alternatives, we're certainly open to that. Obviously, any resolution to add more lines, add more, it is significant cost of dollars, which we're also mindful of that. So we're trying to balance that, but also understand that there's a level of frustration out there in these kind of weather events, or just any outage.
I'm going to take every opportunity when we discuss these outages and the inconvenience of customers, to the advantage of advanced metering technology. Keep backing away from the subject. Advanced metering allows us to know the advance of the power is at. It'll allow us to use current technology of websites and other things. So it's a drum. I'm going to keep reading. I know it's controversial in a very small segment of our population, but it is a tool that would really help us in these type of difficulties.
Mr. Allen. You know, I think one addition is, we looked at this so much after that bad storm that I was just talking about. It's really the only way to handle it, where you get customer service. This is the difference in four thousand, seven thousand, ten thousand people trying to call in, and there's physically no way to ever handle that versus those ten thousand people getting a text before they can call in. You're reversing the communication, and we got to do it. We absolutely have to come to terms and do it. Hopefully, it's just not after a storm so bad that we have to.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that we had AMI this year's budget initially, and we pushed it out one year for two reasons. One, we, we knew we were going to have a preactive year with the twenty-ninth, and we'd been busy on that transmission study. And the second reason was, we knew we had some infrastructure issues with the billing system and the back office computer systems that we really needed to get ironed out. And Andy's group is working on those issues right now, so we're not, we're not wasting the time. We've got, we're using it hopefully to be prepared for AMI next year when we, when we have the money to see up.
And that's true. The next council meeting, not the board meeting decision, will be bringing a contract for a consultant to help us. By now, we have about thirteen separate vendors that are all working together to, for our bills, basically, to go out. The online presence of our bills, it takes thirteen vendors. It should only be two or three vendors. And so we are undergoing a process to simplify that system down to fewer vendors, so much more simplified and efficient mechanism to have the online presence. And so that is key and critical in advance of AMI because the AMI is so technology intensive that we've got to get our ducks in a row, you know, now, and that's what we're working on it now, before, like David said, we rule out something like that. So that'll be coming at the next meeting.
Comments, questions? Appreciate the info. I think that was important for everybody to take. Last outage. I will move on. I have certain questions. Thank you. Does that complete your?
Yes, sir. I didn't, I thought I would just use my time to talk about those things, so I didn't really have anything else to say.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions over the material in the pack? There's not any, any questions on that, and we'll move on to item seven. Discuss financial capital statements, financing options, audits, and financial policies of the power line related to debt issuance issues, reserve account funding, cost allocation, revenue expense projections of loss of power line. Mr. Burge.
All right. My presentation's a little bit different this month than normal because we are in the middle of our year-end audit, and we typically do not show our balance sheet income statement and financial information until the audit is complete. So I wanted to provide you with a calendar of kind of what those activities are, the auditors. We've actually, before this, since September, we've been doing a lot of work on the financials to get those ready for the auditors. They'll be here in the week after Thanksgiving for several weeks. They'll be here fifty-eighteenth of December. And really, throughout the month of January, they will be reviewing the financial statements and getting all of their comments back to us. Following that, on the February the tenth, which is a tentative date at this point, BKD, who is the city's auditor, will be here to, to talk with the city's audit committee. And in addition, they'll be here to talk to the LPNL finance subcommittee to go over the results of the audit. And then on February sixteenth, that BKD will be here to present the audit to the board, and on the twenty-fifth, will present the audit to the council. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea there. There's a lot of activity revolving around that right now. We feel good about everything, and, but lots of work. So that's why you, you had a lighter version of financials this month. Next slide. A slide time. There you go. All right. Again, as I normally do, just to show where our rates are, this is a residential customer, rate one customer using a thousand kilowatt hours. You can see the green line is LPNL, how much an LPNL customer using that level of energy would pay. And then the red line is Excel. You can see for the current timeframe in October, LPNL customer would be paying a hundred dollars and ninety-four cents. We just received Excel's numbers this month, and they are about a dollar and thirty less expensive than LPNL for this month. You can see they've been just a little bit below us for the last four months or five months. But if you look over the last twelve months, still, an LPNL customer's paid about ninety-two dollars less than the similar customer would be paying in Amarillo using the same amount of energy. So we're still proud of that factor, but we're still want to present this to you every month so you know kind of where we stand. What I'm going to spend my time on today is the pass-through rate mechanism that we have, the purchase power recovery factor is what it's actually called on the bill. And I kind of wanted to just go back a little bit. Y'all have heard me do this, some of you have heard me, not all of you have heard me do talk about this, but wanted to kind of refresh everybody's mind what it is, how it works, and where we are today. Again, the, the purchase power recovery factor typically, at least for residential customers, makes up about two-thirds of the bill. So it's, it's the biggest share of it. It's our cost of power that we buy from Excel Energy that we pass on directly to the customer. So the rate that's on the bill, the PPRF rate, basically will generate enough revenues to exactly cover our cost of the power we purchased from Excel Energy. We adjust that rate seasonally. We adjusted on October one, and we adjusted on June one, and that is part of the rate stabilization that we put into place a couple of years ago now. What rate stabilization did was, on a month-to-month basis, those costs coming into LPNL were pretty volatile. And so when we directly pass that on to the customers every month, their rates were kind of going all over the place. So in December of two thousand thirteen, the board and the council approved what was called rate stabilization to eliminate the volatility on the customer side and really for LPNL began to begin absorbing all that volatility. In order for us to absorb the volatility, we needed some money set aside to be able to absorb some of those cost overruns or variations. And so the, the board and the council approved a three and a half million dollar stabilization reserve. And so this is what's illustrated on this graph. So we have three and a half million dollars that could absorb any cost, where our costs exceed our revenues in any given month. We also set an upper bound, so whenever, we didn't want to just, we all always want to end up in even collection, where our revenues exactly equal our expenses, but we know that that's going to fluctuate over time. So we wanted to set some boundaries. So obviously, we did not want to go more than, and what we set up was a reserve, or a limit of about seven and a half million, which is about five percent of the forecasted rep expenses for the upcoming year. So that kind of gives us an upper bound. So if our revenues exceed our expenses by seven and a half million, then we would need to come back to the board, lower that to get us back within the bounds. On the flip side, on the lower end, if our expenses exceed our revenues by more than three and a half million, in other words, if we spent all of that three and a half million dollar reserve, then we would want to come back to the board and ask for you to raise the rate to replenish the reserve and get us back up to that green line. So the green line is always our goal of where we want to be. This slide shows where we've been in act, in actuality over the last couple of years. So you can see at the beginning of, when we first initiated the power pass-through, those first several months, we were actually in over-collected status. So we were actually collecting more revenues than the, the expenses. And you can see currently, we're back in that situation again. It's, it's been a long period of time where we were, have been in an under-collected status, but we've, we've finally at least gotten back to that green line, and at this point, we've exceeded that. The ones where I have arrows pointing at right now are where it's just blue, those were actually, we were in an under-collected status, but we were still had reserves that were on hand to cover those shortages. The areas where we have red, we actually went below the lower limit, which meant we needed to come back to you guys and say, we need to look at, do we even want to raise these rates to get us back and replenish those reserves. Based on Chad's analysis and my analysis of where we were and where the rates were set, we, we kept coming back to you, and we kept saying, if, if we believe that the rates we have set, we will be back in positive territory again. And we did. We, we got there, we got back within the reserve, and today, here, we're actually in over-collected status. But what I've done here is, is I've kind of dissected it by seasons. And so you can see, the first kind of larger area was the winter season in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And at the end of that season, we were cumulatively under-collected three point nine million dollars. So again, we've gone all the way through the reserve of three and a half million, and we're about four hundred thousand dollars below that, which meant we're about four hundred thousand into our other reserves that we have at the utility. Through the summer months that year, if you recall, there was an issue with one of our substations, the Dow substation, where it had gone offline, there was no energy being recorded. It got trued up in, in the June timeframe, and so it was a pretty big expense at that point. So it threw us into a pretty significant under-collection. But by the end of the summer season, we had, we had rebounded a little bit. We were under-collected about four point nine million. Then we go into the next season, which we were really pretty much still under-collected the entire time, but at least we were starting to get back into the, at least into the reserve level. But at the end of the, that season, we were still under-collected three point three million. This summer, as we have been continuing to work towards getting that back to the green bar, the green line, we, we were able to do that and had exceeded that. And in fact, we anticipate continuing to exceed that going forward at the current rate that we have set. One other thing I want to overlay here, don't pay attention to the, these are just the customer rates, is all I'm trying to say is, over this timeframe, you can see, these are the thousand kilowatt customer, this is what they were paying over this time. So you can see, even though we were having all this fluctuation, we were way under-collected, we were over-collected, we, the customer didn't really see a lot of volatility, didn't see a lot of variation. They had their rates in the winter, went up a little in the summer, went back down for the winter, back up for the summer again. So I think that's to point out again how this has worked, and, and we're in a positive situation right now, but we need to decide at this point, how do we, how do we resolve this over-collected status that we, where we see ourselves in right now. What we would normally do, and this goes, goes back to that graphic again of what, kind of what you've seen before, this, though, is only the purchase power recovery factor. It looks just like the graph I showed you earlier, but this is only the pass-through rate. So it's about six to six and a half to seven cent range all the time. And so you can see how, before rate stabilization, you see how volatile it was, and then once rate stabilization went into place, that's how it worked. At this point in time, if we were to go with our normal process, we would normally say, because we're over-collected right now, we would say, y'all need to lower that rate to help us bring, bring it back into within that range. And, and we would lower it for the winter season. And then we'd be back to the summer season, where we would raise it up to where we normally would see in the summer. So that, that's how we historically handled this. And I think what I'm, my point is going to be is that what we've done historically may not be the best thing for our customers at least going forward. And so I have a couple of recommendations that I wanted to make to let you think about it, because at this point, we'll need to come back at the next meeting in December and get your approval, which then that rate would go in effect January the first, whatever you decide to do, whether we leave it alone, whether we lower the rate, whatever we do. So this is the first option. This is the historical way that we've handled it. Another option would be, let's just leave that rate alone, and we will continue to over-collect over the winter timeframe. And then once we get to the summer, because we will be in an over-collected status, we could actually lower the rate slightly for the summer season. And then you don't have that kind of shock to the customers when not only does the rates go up, but their usage goes up in the summer. So this is another option. However, the con to this is we're going to be over-collecting for about six more months in, in this winter season. We're estimating if we leave rates where they are now, we'll be in an over-collected status of about eleven million dollars. Again, we're going, we're going to, this is all revenue neutral. Every one of these is revenue neutral. We're going to get back to that green line from that prior. Our revenues are always going to match our expenses. It's just a timing issue. So this would, would allow us to have an easier transition from the winter into the summer. And then the, the last option I wanted to say is, we could just lower the rate now at a level that we just keep it where it is all the way through end of September, end of the midsummer season. This chart here kind of shows you the three variations all laid out together. And I don't have exact numbers for you today. These are, this is rather theoretical, but this should be about the way it will look. We're going to have to dig into the information and, and get those rates quantified, but I wanted to kind of give you all an idea here of some different options you have. It, it's a change a little bit in philosophy, where, you know, the orange bar would actually, the passer rate would go down a little bit. Now, remember, in the summer season, our base rate goes up. So that going up would be offset by that, by the passer rate going down a little bit. So the, the overall rate may go up a little bit still under that scenario, but not the magnitude that it might normally go up. The, the purple line, again, would lower it a little bit now. It would lower the amount of, we'd still over-collect in the winter season, but it would, it would limit how, any rate, any rate changes that we have in the summer. And then, of course, the, the third, the first option maybe was kind of a historical approach. So I wanted to just throw those out there. I'm prob, all again, these were all revenue neutral. It's really kind of more how does it impact the customer? I would, you know, I would recommend either the, the orange or the purple line. I think either one is probably much better for the customer standpoint and, you know, cause a little bit less of a problem put in in the summer when volumes go up. So I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have any. I know through a lot of outages, hopefully, that was understandable, but I wanted to give you all this option this time because we do find ourselves in a situation where we are collecting more than our expenses. But again, we're going to get back to even territory where that matches, it's just a timing issue. I'll open it up.
Mr. Comey.
Andy, if we lower those January one, are you going to proceed us coming back and making the adjustments?
I, I would absolutely think we might have to, just because this is a long time to have to forecast what if we think our expenses are going to be and what we think revenues are going to be. There's so many variables with weather, with natural gas. There's always that potential. Our goal will be to set a rate where we don't have to touch it again, but I know with the way the world works, that that's, I would estimate that we'd more than likely be back at June one anyway to make a small tweak if we had to, or we may just be able to say the rate that was set originally is still good, and maybe we can keep going forward.
But if, if you leave them where they are now, I mean, you have even smaller adjustment.
If we leave rates where they are now, we'll, we'll be significantly over-collected by the end of the winter. So I would, I would think that almost in any situation, that would require a reduction in the summer rate.
Another fact that we need to consider is fifty thousand students in the city of Lurie, of which a very large percentage have gone during the summer. And I think that we've got to realize, they're, they're consumers and taxpaying citizens like the rest of us. So to me, the fairest thing, and for a lot just of goodwill to all of our customers, would be to lower the rate immediately, not to the point that we get ourselves back into a wreck in the summer. But I think we need to factor in the fact, those fifty thousand students between the several different college campuses that we have, and the fact that, I mean, our customers are hurting. And the fact that, I mean, our customers are hurting us. And we're going to come in right after the holiday season. You know, really, the whole of the loan was not to change the rate. The whole of the loan was to give rebates when I first came on this board. And they were very lopsided rebates that were in favor of the large commercial customer instead of the retail consumers. As you're working those numbers, I just tell the board, I would love to see us be able to lower rates. And it may not be as significant on, but anything that we can in January, I think is a benefit to all of us.
So, to recap what you're telling us, mainly because of the natural gas costs were less than what we anticipated. We've over-collected. The pass-through, the SPS, our Excel charged us. It's caused us to do an over-collection that you don't think, using our crude algorithm, because that's kind of what it is that we used in the past, you will be able to stabilize that without lowering the rates probably beginning in January?
Well, I think in any scenario, we're going to, we're going to have a lowering of the rate at some point, just because of the over-collected status.
And it seems to me like, you haven't told us which you favor. But it seems to me like the purple line would be an immediate reduction in January, right? That would stay steady all the way through until next October. Is that correct?
That is correct. The total rate, remember, though, will still go up in the summer because the base rate will be added on there.
Certainly.
The orange bar kind of mitigates that increase in the summer. So, if you're concerned about the customers having much of an increase in rates at all in the summer, the orange one will alleviate that as much as possible. But the purple one will still do that. It just does it sooner. Like the mayor said, it, you know, doesn't, we won't be hanging on to those over-collections over that period of time. We'll be starting to give those back sooner than later. This is the difference.
Which pockets you prefer to, some pockets, or other pockets?
And you don't, going forward, I think our, we're having a little bit of a philosophical change in our rate structure because we, you know, you see these pretty big spikes on June 1. You know, when you had the pass-through going up and you had the base rate going up. I'm not saying we want to do away with that completely because the cost starts to be higher in the summer. But if we can minimize that differential between the winter and summer, I think that'll really greatly help everybody. Because, you know, that volume increase and those rate increases in the summertime have been real problematic. And so, I think, I think our philosophy going forward would be to squeeze us a little bit closer together where the differential between the summer and winter are not as dramatic as they have been in the story.
And it's a work in progress. We've just started doing this. It's a very small history. And we threw this out there and it worked for a while, but then, nobody anticipated the dramatic drop in fossil fuels. And so, this is where we're at. We need to give this money back to the consumers as soon as we can. So, let's hopefully put this on the January agenda and we'll vote on it. December, sorry. And we go into January.
At the next meeting, we'll come back with actually what those rates would be. And we can even show you both options to, you know, let you know what that looks like. But we'll certainly do that homework between now and then, and y'all will make your decision then. And then, we'll implement the actual change as of January the 1st. So, from that point forward, the rate will be set for whatever period of time.
A Christmas present for all of you.
Well, as part of, as a legal question, will the council need to ratify this under the charter?
The tariff is written in a way that they give the board the authority to do this change on the pass-through rate. It is written in a way.
I don't think we'll have to tie our hands to lowering the rates. Mr. Rose, you had it.
I was just going to add really quickly, you know, to what Andy's saying, that one of the biggest challenges that we have every summer is agent gaining customers on how much their cost has increased because of actual usage versus us having to raise both parts of our rate to cover costs. And so, I think, you know, Andy's point is really true. The more we can get that number into a straight line, the more that we can tell folks, hey, look at your usage. If your cost is going up, it's true that because your usage went up two or three times, that's difficult in the summertime. That helps on that aspect as well.
All good information. Very good information. Something I would definitely consider here, when we're headed with the over-collection. And Mr. Burcham, were you going to cover page 21?
Sorry, did I jump ahead? I'm sorry, let me get there. I certainly can. Page 21 of your, I don't have a slide for it. But page 21 is basically the budget of the cash basis for the, really for the fiscal year. What you've been seeing prior to this time has been what we call our forecast. And we were, and this one still is not final because we will still be getting a final process or invoices in from Excel Energy for September. We, that'll come in our November deal.
Yeah, so the true-up on the fuel is on a two-month lag. So, the October bill that we just received had the August fuel cost true-up on it, which is not reflected here. And then, the bill we received in November will have the September true-up on it, which obviously is not reflected here either.
But you go ahead, yes?
We do, but when this was put together, we didn't.
The fact those show positive 3.3, I guess, before the over-collection, right?
Yes, that is correct. The surplus of 3.3 million for the budget. We were at about 92% to 93% of budget on revenues and expenses. So, and we knew we were going to be significantly below our budget because of purchase-power costs. They are down significantly from where we budgeted early on in the process. So, where the budget was $159 million for purchase-power, it came in $147 million. So, $12 million of less cost on purchase-power, which obviously helped in our community that, you know, it's type of was lower gas prices that ultimately led to lower costs for our consumers. You know, really, a lot of the, there's not a lot of change in what I presented to you at the last month on the budget. Again, revenues were down just because of the purchase-power costs were down. Our off-system sales is another big component of the change. Again, that was due to the termination of those contracts with Excel. So, we had about half of the revenues that we originally projected there. But again, that wasn't a surprise. We knew that was coming throughout the year. On the expense side, on the, on the cost centers, you'll see that we're about $183 million compared to $200 million. So, a significant savings in our, in our cost centers. And that, really in every category, compensation and benefits, supplies, sorry, maintenance and professional services and other charges and scheduled charges, we're all down significantly from the budget. One, one big area, for example, is water. We were down about a million dollars of expense in water compared to budget just because we had much lower usage. We had a cool summer. The generators didn't run nearly as much as we projected they would. So, even though we had a lower revenue on the off-system sales, we had some costs associated with that that offset that lower revenue. So, those are some areas throughout. Any other questions that you might have on the budget?
I just wanted to confirm something on our, on our budget deal there. You'll see in the fund level expenses, the cash-funded electric capital is about $10.8 million. And that's what we've spent into our capital projects. It's out of our, basically out of our cash, cash money.
That's correct. Out of our capital program, we fund a third of it with cash and two-thirds of it with debt. And so, that is the amount that we, we actually, that $10.8 million, we transfer the cash over to the capital program. And then, once, as those projects are spent, that cash is going out of that bucket, basically. So, all of that $10.8 may not have been spent at this point in time, but it's been moved to fund those, fully funded each of those capital projects the board and council approved. And then, we track that basically on another page in your, in your agenda, which is page 29, the capital program, which shows you the bond funding, the cash funding, and then how much we have spent to date. So, for example, on the bond fund, we have a $69 million capital program. And $36 million of that currently has, is bond funds remaining. Out of that bond funds, $36 million, we've spent $12 million out of those bond funds. So, we have about $23 million remaining in bonds sitting in the bank. And then, on the cash side, we had $32 million allocated for cash. Out of that, we spent about half of that, about $16 million. So, we have $16 million in cash still sitting in the capital program. And remember, capital program isn't a year-by-year year. It's a life-to-date. So, some of these projects may be three or four years old because they take a long time to do. So, sometimes that, that cash may be sitting there for a year or two before it's completely spent. But that kind of gives you a snapshot on how that.
So, a significant part of what we're, what we're funding, like you said, on the capital ventures, is about current cash.
Yes, that's right.
Any, any other questions for Andy on that? Anything else Andy?
That's all I have today.
Thank you. That would bring us to item A, Consider Resolution to Approve the Amendment of and Requesting the City Council to Amend the City of Lubbock's Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Project. The Lubbock Fire and Light, as Concerns Capital Improvement Projects, I-92373 Dispatch Control Room Upgrade and II-92319 Transmission Loop. And I'm going to entertain a motion on that to.
Some of.
Second, okay, discussion. Mr. Coven?
Yes, let me, let me explain what we're trying to do here. The, we had a project to build a backup dispatch center in RCIP. And it was actually a 2016-17 project. And we were going to, we were going to build the primary control center at the hill. We're undergoing a renovation right now, and so, we're working on that as a primary. Then, we're going to build a backup next year. Well, the fire department, Emergency Operations Center came to us and they've got a project underway right now with the fire evidence. Do, it's not underway, but the design is underway at least. And they came to us and said, you know, we wanted to approach y'all and see if you might want to go into this, go into this facility with us. And the idea behind that is, if we get into a major event where they have to invoke the Emergency Operations Center and man that facility, tornado or some, you know, some emergency like that, then, then it would be good for LPL to be in that facility at the same time. And so, we looked at what they had there and Mr. Coven and his folks looked at it and they, they thought it was a really attractive idea to move into that facility. They're designing that facility to withstand 250 mile-hour winds, fixed walls, soundproofing throughout. And it just really looks like a nice facility. And so, we sat down with the Emergency Operations Center, we sat down with Mr. Lomas and talked through some issues with, some financial issues with him and with, with the architects that are working on this project. And so, we, we, we think at this point in time that it's a project we're pursuing, that, you know, we appreciate them giving us an opportunity to man that facility. It's not too far from the hill where, where our primary offices are anyway. It's far enough away that we think it would, it would be some redundancy in an event that a storm came through and wiped out one, but the other would have a good chance of surviving anyway. But close enough that we can get people back and forth between the two facilities very easily. So, we, what, I think what this resolution does is authorizes moving some money around. Andy, you might want to explain the financial aspects of it.
Actually, Chad was geared up to, sure, that's all.
Sure. So, project 92373 is the dispatch control room upgrade. And right now, there's been half a million appropriated in that. And in fiscal year 1617 in the capital program, there was a little over 1.5 million that was in the plan to be appropriated. So, what this budget amendment does is essentially move that money forward this fiscal year to allow the construction and the design and engineering to take place with this project that David's described. And the way that that's going to be funded is through project 92319, which was listed as the transmission loop. After reviewing our capital program and everything else that we had going on, there's already been 7.3 million in bonds issued with that project that we're not going to be able to get to in this fiscal year. So, we will reduce that project by the one point. The exact number's in your backup. It's $1,563,662. It will be reduced by that amount and moved into the 92373 to help pay for the construction and design and engineering along with the equipment associated with this project.
And we think because of the combination of utilizing this one shared space, you know, we'll be sharing the generator, we'll be sharing HVAC, we'll be sharing, there'll be a lot of shared costs. I think we will see some savings. We think the city will see some savings. And so, even though we moved the exact amount of the budget just up a year, we, we don't have all the cost estimates yet. So, I would assume that we're going to tend to be well under budget on that project. But we just want to ahead and move the money forward a year. And then, once we get better indication, we can come back to y'all and then someone, if we can imagine a change there. But we feel pretty confident that we will see some savings out of this combined.
And as far as the financial models and rates go, another potential question is how will this impact the rates? This is already in the capital program and this, we don't anticipate this impacting rates at all. So, we won't see the rates go up as a result of us moving this forward.
How will we determine the construction, the capital cost upfront for our, for our ratepayers? You know, the allocation for Lubbock and Lubbock for that and the allocation for ongoing maintenance and operations?
Who are we sharing with? The engineer had already come up with a rough estimate of the cost. It's about $990,000 roughly for the construction and then about $8,000 for the engineering. Just a little over $1 million total for the cost. So, that leaves us a little less than half a million dollars for all of the technology and equipment that would be necessary to be housed in that location. So, I think we, we have a decent estimate on those costs. But obviously, as design gets a little bit more detailed, things sometimes change a little bit. So, we'll continue to work.
So, rather than the city centers currently in municipal square and then ours in the square hill, so we would, everything would be combined, that makes all the sense in the world.
I just want to talk to you all too. Three years ago, this was happened. There was no way that you could get the staff to go pin down this stuff to the city again. And not just the staff at LPL versus the staff in the city, but staff at LPL versus the staff of the fire department versus, you know, three or four different departments. The fact that everybody came together on this project and really worked together and came up with a solution that's going to save the best part of the money, give us a better system. I think we really need to applaud the staff's work and I'm talking to everybody. It took a joy after, I for one really appreciate everybody on the LPL side, everybody else on the other departments and the cities, all that counted, where y'all came together and worked this solution.
How long has it been going on? I mean, it's the first time heard of it. Sounds like a great idea.
It, it happened fairly recently. It's been within the last couple of months that we first started talking to the chief. And I think their design was pretty far along and they brought us in county at the last minute. It's probably, it's probably delayed them a little bit going forward. And I, I really appreciate you, the comments, Mary. It was, wouldn't have happened if they hadn't reached out to us. The new fire chief reached out to us and really extended, extended the hand to us. We appreciate the part.
But how would we figure the cost allocation? I'm just curious.
Well, the architects did the cost on a, they took the total cost before, the total cost after, and they, they, what he told me was.
It's like the difference for adding us on?
The, the add-on cost to support the, the fact. Now, I'm not sure that's the fairest way to go because, you know, you could argue that, well, maybe we should pay an average cost of the square feet in the whole building. But, you know, I thought it was, it was very reasonable when he came up with. $2,400 square feet is what we're getting and it's, we'll have our own space where we, where we still have secure access, which we'll have to have for, for their compliance.
Going in, you'll probably, you know, it gave something on the square there or something like that. But it's just, that's just details. But anyway, getting together in that facility sounds like a great idea.
Well, I'll tell you, we're in an emergency situation. We've got all those people working. Everything needs to be in one location. I don't know what it is, but when you can talk to folks and when you can communicate with each department, that's just the best way to go.
In an emergency situation, yeah. I've, I've been in the ELC on three different heads. Every time, I can have the critical part because it's typically where they're elected. And so, we've got our lines going down throughout the city. It makes so much sense in our system, just the willingness of everybody working together. It's truly historic for those of us that remember the history of short three years ago.
I think another really neat benefit of all this is, you know, normally, you'd think.
I think another really big benefit of all this is, you know, normally, you'd think an EOC would only be used during an emergency situation, but with LPL being housed there, and also the fire dispatch would be housed right next door, LPL, it's actually a facility that will be used 24 hours a day, during six to five days a year. So I think that's an added benefit. You're actually using a facility round the clock rather than it sits empty until an emergency comes out. So I think that's pretty cool. You know, you're spending this money, you want to make sure it's well used.
So.
My permission's been in on.
All right.
Well, I'm going to really stick my neck out here, but I'm just going to say, the more we can do to bring things together, we better. My personal opinion is, many years ago, when we voted to separate LPL, I think it seemed right at the time, but as I look back, it seems like it was probably an overreaction, and it probably maybe could have something been done to prevent, you know, taking reserves from LPL to City Hall. I wouldn't be surprised, maybe not in my lifetime, but sometime we might get rid of that. If I were elected official on the council, I would have.
She said please.
I mean, I would, you know, I would certainly have some of the heartburn you guys have, but I think it's, boy, anything we can do to save our city as a whole money, I mean, that's good for everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ben.
I move that we amend CIP 92373 by increasing.
We appreciate you. You're calling the question.
Smaller question.
We didn't really.
You made the original house, Charlie.
Well, technically, we really didn't make the motion. You just called for a motion about that.
We appreciate you waking up.
It's all right.
I'll, I'll basically end the discussion then by saying, is there any other questions or comments concerning that resolution? If there are none, then I'll call for all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
And you vote. That then brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Kastner, do you want to read every item in the consent agenda?
No, sir, we, there are short synopsis, so we, it's nice. Okay. Item nine is the settlement on the locket case. Item 10 is the demolition contract on Massagale Cooling Tower. Item 11 is a contract on equipment, aerial devices, and self-propelled diggers. Item 12 is to reject all proposals on refurbishing steam turbine valves at the cook station. Item 13 rejects proposals on refurbishing the main drive doors at the Brandon Station. And item 14 is for equipment purchases, free phase distribution, transportation, and ticketing. So I would entertain a motion among the consent agenda. I'd move to approve. Second, all those in favor, let's say aye.
Aye.
And you vote. Thank you all. Is there any other business we have to, then we will adjourn.
City Council, again.